I think today was because the buses were in the front of Friday and there were afraid kids would be stuck at the bus stop. This is my kind of week, Monday and Friday I'll come and lay down Tuesday.
Jackson Valens was last Friday. Because we don't really call up so good grade they just come in miraculously isn't great.
Well, funny thing is I'm getting alerts from. It's completely weird, I don't know for it, so I'm like you turned it in, I didn't realize it was.
He likes his it today.
I saw.
Do on Thursday.
Yes.
All right, we will call the meeting to order. Thank you for coming. It's nice to see everybody. Tonight, we have a discussion item that we're going to do first. We have some staff here from Fairfax County. It is the Department of Transportation about the connector bus service to the Metro Rail. Phase two stations which are opening, we can finally say next year, it's so crazy. And Michael Walke is here from planning and he's going to introduce our guest.
Yes, I want you to say, we're joined tonight by Michael Felchow and Randy White with Fairfax County Department of Transportation. And they're here with a presentation to update on possible bus route updates to coincide with the phase two of the Silver Line in the Herndon and Reston area. There are two public outreach meetings coming up. There's one in Reston this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. And why don't you give the location again for that one? The other one is at Herndon Middle School next Tuesday night.
It's Reston Community Center at Lake.
Yes, Reston Community Center at Lake Anne. That one is Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00. The other one is at Herndon Middle School and that is next Tuesday from 6:00 to 8:00.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again. Thank you for giving me to everyone. Just getting myself situated here. I'm Michael Felchow. With I'm the chief of planning for the Transit Services Division. I got one of my planners here, Randy White. And we go through a relatively short presentation about what the planning process and what the steps are that we're going to go through. Mind you, we haven't really started the planning process yet. We haven't gone into any of the major analysis yet, but we'll get to that later. Okay, so what's the purpose of this study? Mike sort of mentioned it. We're taking the opportunity as they're starting the phase two and opening up the new rail line to take an opportunity and say, are do we have the right structure for the route for the routes that are out there? Do we need to change anything due to the new station to travel patterns about to change? So we're going ahead and taking a look at it. We're going through a rather detailed process of analysis and a detailed public outreach process, three phases of a public outreach process. We'll also be taking a look at the route effectiveness, efficiencies, route design and improve looking at ways to improve access and mobility to the system. Just a little overview of what you have out there up in this region of the Fairfax County transit system. There are about 32 routes that encompass the area of Herndon and Reston. There are, there's one commuter route that's 599, which goes all the way down Pentagon. Five circulator routes, 11 local routes and 15 feeder routes. This peak hour pullout, that's the number of buses that are on those routes during the peak hours, AM and PM. There's about 70 buses at one time. The facilities that are presently out there for transit to operate in and out of, you're familiar with many of these, I'm assuming in the area. Wiele Park and Ride Lot that also has a kiss and ride and a bike locker room. We have future facilities that you're familiar with, the Reston Town Center, the Herndon Innovation Center. All these have park and ride lots. There's also kiss and ride lots at the Reston Town Center and both at the Herndon Innovation Center. And they also have bike locker rooms. Other transit facilities are the Reston Town Center Transit Station and then of course the Reston North and South Park and Ride Lots. This is just a little map. If you're not familiar with the transit system, a little map that shows you exactly where the routes are. Most of them are circulating through the community and then linking to Metro Rail Line at Wiele. There are a few routes that do connect to other portions of the community like 605 that goes all the way down to the Government Center down near the mall, FedEx Mall. And then of course, I mentioned the 599 that operates all the way up to Pentagon. Lamada has one route, the 5A that also operates in this area. And I believe that goes all the way out back east. And then of course connecting to the airport on several routes. So the initial planning process can start with the existing transit development plan that was approved by the board back in 2016. I believe that was in March 2016. We're then going to have public input with current service and future service needs. Assess the existing system, impact the travel patterns due to the metro rail connection as you said before. Most of the routes are actually going to the Wiele Metro Rail Station. Our routes, they won't need to do that anymore, so we need to make some adjustments to the routes and make them a little bit more efficient. And then looking at the level of funding available for these service adjustments. The assessment of the process, we'll take a look at alignments, increase connectivity, frequency, improve mobility within the community, reduce congestion where appropriate, and then improve community vitality where we can. The planning process, we're hoping to finish by the end of early, end of this year, between October and December. We've already started. We did a lot of data analysis and a lot of data gathering right now. That's what we've been doing. We have our first round of public meetings that Mike mentioned earlier. I'll have a little bit more detail on those. So we've gone through a review, doing the public outreach, first phase of public outreach. The second thing to the public outreach goes to the next level of analysis. What we'll bring back from these public meetings, we'll go through that information, come back with alternatives. Anywhere between two and three network system alternatives with levels of service. And then we'll give people the opportunity to review those, have a little bit more activity on those. And then we'll bring that information back, reassess it through stakeholder committee, technical committees, some additional analysis. Bring back a preferred service, probably in late spring, early summer, a preferred service which will hope to get more input from yourself, other, the public and our stakeholder agencies which are primarily human service agencies, nonprofits within the region. And then take your input, make some minor modifications to that. And then in October through December timeframe, we'll bring it to the county board for approval. And after that, marketing outreach. Somewhere in 2020, when the train, the train starts up and Silver Line, we will start up on the exact same day. Whatever that new system comes to be. So the public outreach that's starting up this week, a rather extensive effort. The meetings that Mike mentioned about, we're going to have an interactive group exercise. This isn't just a come in and look at a PowerPoint, listen to a person like myself. We'll have a little bit of that. But we're going to primarily have an activity where people can get around in groups of five to 10. And, and we're going to ask them one major question. Where do you need to go from and to? And they're going to have a little activity. They're going to put stickers on a map, a little backpack tape. And they're going to, and that's going to help us determine where their needs are, when do they need. There's also going to be a sensitivity task where sensitivity questions, not a test. Sensitivity questions, which are things like, do you want bus stops closer to you? Would you rather walk a little further? Do you want service in the afternoon, in the day? What's more important to you? And that allows us to refine the transit system as it operates. Obviously, we're going to be looking at the transit development plan as it stands today, new concepts, quantitative and qualitative information. That's what we're a part of the conversation we'll have this week with the public and then service recommendations. And each one of these public outreaches that we're doing over the next eight to 12 months is going to have the same process. We're going to come back, communicate to you if you want us to, communicate to other agencies, communicate to the public, have another engagement that's a little bit more interactive than just somebody just standing up there and telling them what they should know or should not know. So some of the concepts that we're thinking about, we're looking at, and it's also part of that sensitivity analysis is there's two diagrams up here. One diagram shows what's known as a maximum ridership. Put your resources where people go to and from, those major corridors. Is that what you want? Or do we want coverage? Do we want buses down as many roads as possible? Possible the, the difference between that is if we spread our route, spread the peanut butter out a little bit, I could say that. You end up with a lot of, lot of coverage, but not a lot of service per, per route. That means on a route, on a single road, you might get one bus an hour, maybe a bus every 40 minutes, but you won't have to walk very far. Or we can go to more of the maximum ridership is where you might have to walk a little further, but the buses come every 10, 15 minutes. So there's, you know, will we do one or the other? Probably not. We're going to do somewhere in the middle. It depends on what the public needs and that's the way I like to look at transit. What do we need to serve you? Another concept, and these are once again the same sort of sensitivity questions we want to ask people. How far do you want to walk? What's the proximity to the activity centers that we need to get to? Density is obviously a key element. We don't want buses wandering around out to the rural area where not a lot of people would use the transit system. We want to go to activity centers. Another thing, back in the seventies and eighties, we tried to do coverage with transit. Wander through every subdivision as possible, pick up as many people as possible. Now, it doesn't, it wastes a lot of fuel. Not a lot of people get on the bus. Buses can't go down every single road. So the thinking now is in the industry, make the bus go straight, make it go fast. And people typically can walk through in most cases and make the bus get, make the bus go a little bit more efficient and effective in that manner. So there's always trade offs. So what are we looking for from you? What we're looking for is to get the word out. Now, from my understanding, Robin from our communications that is here, she's already told me that we're getting a lot of already excitement about the public. So whatever you can do to tell voters here in this community, we're going to be here, we want to hear from you. The more we can have interaction, the more, the better plan we can make. The key issues we need to know from you and from your voters, your citizens of this community, what those, what their issues are. I've been transit for over 20 years. Yes, I know transit, but I also know since I've been in here for 20 years, it's your transit agency, it's your transit service, I don't want it. So I want to hear from you. I want to hear from that. Service suggestions. Everyone has an idea. I need to know what they are so that I can modify the system to meet your needs. And then the other answer is possible. Next steps. So we have an online survey going on right now, so if you can't make it to the public meeting, a lot of the questions and sort of the sensitivity questions I was talking about are online right now between January and January, February 15. Check last week, Friday, Thursday, Friday, over 900, sorry, 306 people had gone through the survey already. To me, that's like 300 people in a public meeting. That's pretty good. The public meetings are listed here, Saturday on the 26th at the Temple Million, Herndon Middle School. On Tuesday from on the 29th. And the key point that I want to make about these public meetings is that we're going to, if we have a lot of people, we're going to do that little session activity twice. So people have opportunity to be able to come in when they need to and do the session and then to go look at the boards, talk with staff and then leave if they want. And then we'll do it all over again. So if people come in while we're doing the session, we'll go ahead in the back of the room, look at some of the boards, ask comments, ask questions of staff. And we're going to have, we're going to have enough staff there hopefully to accommodate everyone. So and then we develop the public transit service alternatives, which I had mentioned before, based on public input, existing service information and travel patterns. I mentioned the three step process that we've been bringing and then bring those alternatives back to the public to review. And that's going to be crucial pieces. If we bring something back and the people buy off on it, then we have consensus. This is a consensus building process that we've developed. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Anybody?
Yeah.
Thank you. My concern is around the public input for disseminating the request for information or feedback. I think Fairfax County, last I checked, there was about 120 some languages spoken in the hundreds of public school students. I think what my concern is, how do we reach people that really need the service but have difficulty communicating? Herndon is, I think, a 50% plus immigrant minority. And we do have a lot of English and second language residents. So my, my suggestion would be think through that process as you're gathering the input. Because I think those are the communities that are typically more.
Absolutely. So and you can like me on how that. Well, one of the things, that's one of our major concerns, it's a Title VI issue. And what our communications group has done is they've identified the major languages that are spoken in this area and are going to have at least a Spanish speaking translator on site for the public meetings. We've also translated the survey, translated it into two different languages so that people can see, can read and give their input. If we find that the languages are more of a variety, we have capabilities of dealing with that. As one of our major concerns and we're fully aware of the population that rides many of our buses are not from here or if they are from here, they speak, they speak more than one language and they're more comfortable with, they're not even a speaking language in the name maybe. So we're, but thank you. We are very concerned. And if we need to adjust, I wish that you could tell us so we can adjust. Because one of the things that we are going to do in this process is as we finish this first round of public meetings, we're going to sit down internally and say, did we meet our mark? Did we get to people? Did we find that there was a language at the meetings that we were not prepared for? And then make adjustments to that. We're going to do that again each round so that we're always modifying as we move forward. So we're not just stacked. If we don't have enough people at the public meetings, we're going to find out why and make those adjustments.
Do you have a timeline after the meetings in regards to, you know, benchmarks in regards to rollout or hypotheticals? The reason why I ask that is because I worked on the Herndon High School Middle School assessment. And from time to meeting in June to November when the buses were adjusted because of time schedules and based on the analytics that you did. And it was super quick. I mean, I'd sort of expect six months, but is there a, is there a timeline for rollout or?
Yes, this is the rollout right here. The rollout is the day the trains start to roll.
Okay.
So that's when we plan on getting it. We're hoping to get all this wrapped up, all the planning wrapped up by the mid to late summer.
Yep.
So that we can bring it to the board, has enough vetting time for all the agencies. And let me also mention, we also have a stakeholder group that made up of nonprofits, a technical group made up of hopefully, you know, staff members from both Herndon and Reston and other transit agencies like Loud and Lamada, which will also, will all sit down and do the analysis. And what we're hoping to do is start with public meetings first, bring that information to the stakeholder meetings, bring that meeting to the technical, all within really quick progression of about a couple of weeks. Do our feedback loop and make adjustments for the next thing and then go do analysis. So what we're looking at doing here is we're hoping to find, you know, the end of the summer, we're going to have an alternative, a preferred alternative that we can vet out.
And are you going to do a soft or hard opening with this?
This, the way things are going to work, this is going to be a hard open.
Okay.
We literally have no other option to do because of the way.
Understood.
Things are structured.
Yeah, fair enough.
Sheila have a question.
Yeah, when you do the two different meetings at Reston and Herndon, they're going to be the same exact meeting. So if you live in Herndon and you can't go on Tuesday, go Saturday?
Yeah, you can go to either one. It doesn't matter.
Same information.
Same information. You change the title.
Yes. So the other is have, have you done outreach to Harbor House that sets the county run senior center?
We sent, we sent an email with all the information to about 150. I mean, I live in Herndon, so I went through nonprofits, NCS, I went through the arts organizations. So in Harbor House, the senior center, senior services and Harbor House.
Thank you.
And is this on your Facebook page with the county so we could just share it? Okay, perfect.
It's on the town.
The towns.
Okay, so we can just share that.
It was just posted. Yeah, I shared.
Signee Falbacher.
So I have a couple of questions. Are we serving, are we just planning to serve our current ridership or are we expanding our, our target audience? Because when we're connecting the buses with the metro, we're looking at a different audience. So are they going to, are we planning on the future rather than just sort of refiguring, reconfiguring for the same ridership?
The way we're doing it is we're all, everything's on the table. We're doing the future tip. This is not just, hey, let's just look at our existing market. This is look at the existing market, make it better for the, those individuals who are riding. And let's make it better for anyone who wants, who wants to use the transit system.
Because I think the, the thing that's becoming apparent is that we're, we're trying to encourage more and more people to use metro and to use public transportation and it has to appeal to them. So I know you're aware of that. Other question is, are we connecting, are we keeping in mind the connections with other parts of the area? And the reason I ask that is that we have a couple of people in town who don't have cars and who walk everywhere and would take the bus. And one of them in particular told me that it was impossible for him to get to the clock tower grocery stores from the town of Herndon. And I don't know if this is still the case, but he had to basically stop at the Herndon line and walk. So are we taking those kinds of things into?
All those kinds of comments is what we want and what we need. And that exercise that I talked about are going to be people going to be able to say, I'm here and I want to get to here. And that's what we need to have so that we can modify our routes to accommodate as many people as possible. We're also looking at the 605 which operates going south. That route is a great route, but it takes forever in a day to get all the way down to US 50 because of the enders trying to capture everybody as it goes south. Do we need to make that a straight shot? Those are the kinds of questions that we need to ask. Who's using it? Who wants to use it? And how can we help you?
So I know you said the meetings for both the two meetings will basically be the same, but will they, will they be focused on certain routes? Like the 950? Because you guys have tons of routes, right, throughout Fairfax County? So I'm assuming what really affects the Silver Line is a certain number of routes? Just to narrow it down because otherwise.
Yes, the meeting will only serve, be on these 32 routes.
Oh, 32.
These 32, not the 88 routes for the entire county.
Okay.
We're just focusing in on these 32 routes that serve this area. This is part of a larger effort. We're taking the entire county, break it up into five pieces. And each year, we're doing one fifth of the system. We've already started from all the services, all the routes in Franconia. There's about 20 of them. This is the Silver Line. We're taking opportunities since Silver Line started to do what we're calling the, you know, phase two Silver Line route optimization for these 32. And next year, we will do Vienna routes. We'll start from Chantilly and Centerville over into Vienna. So each part of the county will get their segment done. So there are 32 routes, but we also have to understand how it's going to link into the rest of the system. And that's what we're making, we're keeping that in mind, but we're focusing in on these 32.
So the 32 means there's 32 routes that touch Herndon?
32 routes that are either in Herndon, Reston, or touch the Silver Line in some fashion within that map, within this map.
The new part of the Silver Line or the existing part? Like we're saying the new part, just to be obvious here.
The existing from Wiele all the way to the county line.
Okay.
So basically to the airport.
Okay.
That's the area of the Silver Line.
That's the area of focus for this discussion?
Focus, yes. And we're going as far down as basically I-66 because we have to concern ourselves with the one wire route that 605 that touches this area.
Touches that, okay.
All the way north on 920, 926 and 924.
Okay.
So touching those two, that's the area that we're looking at.
And then to add on to what I think Signee was asking, maybe I'm asking the same thing, but so is the goal that you want to potentially add new routes, change existing routes, or it sounds like it's potentially.
It could be, yes. We're, we're not coming in with a preconceived notion of what the end result is. We're saying, what do you need?
Right.
Now, what we're going to try to do is take the existing resources we have out there and modify. We're, what we're hoping for is a two level approach. Because the first approach will be try to restructure everything within the amount of resources. And then a phase, have a phased approach that says, well, beyond 2020, what else we could do? The question was about the future. Is there five more routes we need to add? Is there 10 more routes we need to add? And go ahead and put those in our planning process.
And then when you go to the BOS, that's essentially to ask for budget, I'm assuming? Because you're going to probably need additional routes or something as if that's.
Once again, it will be a two phased approach. First, when we go to the board later this year, it will be, here's the service changes we plan on making. And we have all these other sets that would enhance the service beyond that. Depending upon how things move, we may ask for them then or we may ask for them later. The goal here is to make sure that the connections are still made with, within the existing resources that we have. Now, remember, if we're able to modify our route structure, sometimes we can find efficiencies and then we can actually improve routes without actually asking for more resources because we have inefficiencies already in the system. And down in Franconia, we found many, many hours of inefficiency. So we may find that here as we dive into the details and say, well, try not to get too detailed today. There's a route, there's a bus that's going into Wiele. It sits there for 20 minutes. It probably shouldn't sit there for 20 minutes. It should sit there for 10 minutes and then get back out on the street. Bus is sitting around, don't carry people. Bus is moving, carry people. So how can we bind those inefficiencies and make the system better? You do that, sometimes you don't have to ask for more resources because you made the system better.
So speaking of that, you had asked, you had stated that you had done some analytics to, what did you do exactly? Because I would think that analytics would be a great, so that's my line of work in my day job. But I would think that'd be a great way to get some of this done ahead of time to figure out what, what is being utilized. So that's already been done?
Analytics and analytics include on time performance of every route by every time point within these 32. Also, all boarding, all boarding. Also, all boarding, all boardings. We also call them a license where everyone gets off and on. Our buses know exactly where they are throughout the system, because they all have ADL, GPS. So they know where they are, they know where people get off and on. They don't know who gets off and on, they just know somebody got on here and somebody got off there. So it's automated passenger accounting. So we understand that, we gathered all that information, and we're assessing it, thousands of data points, information. So that's what we're doing right now, is looking at all that information, and then sort of ranking that information. Where are we weak? Where are we strong? What time of day are we strong? What time of day are we weak?
I think two more questions. So the survey online, I can't find it, but maybe it's, maybe someone else will tell me where it is, but...
If you're on the main page of Fairfax Connector.com, if you just scroll down to the bottom, you'll see three little call-out boxes, and one says, are you on Fairfax Connector?
Yeah, bus service, winter weather. Okay, so it's not super obvious where it is, in my opinion. So I do want to direct people to it, but honestly, I can't find it, but...
And I couldn't find the towns either, so I've been over here trying to find it.
But I'm on Fairfax Connector.com, or at least I thought I was, but maybe it went, maybe it took me to Fairfax Government, so I'll...
I think it's way down the box.
Okay. So potentially, if we could move that, because, and how long will the survey be on?
Till the 15th of February.
Okay. So I think, given that it's such a short period of time, if I could make that request? Because I would love to direct people to that, I think that's great, if we're giving them online survey, but it's going to need to be...
We'll get that moved ASAP.
Thank you. And then for the presentation, will this presentation be shown at the two meetings?
Yes.
So just a little nitpick on my part, since someone who's older and doesn't have great vision, if you could change the font, some of the font is super crazy small, so I found it really hard to read, so I think you're going to have that challenge. Especially number seven, which I think is a really critical slide when you talk about timeline. I mean, right, so make that bigger. And to me, focus on the timeline, that's what I think people want to know. You're going to give input, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, like, focus on, they don't care about all the, and then we have to do this, or there's a lot of detail on it I think the public won't be as interested in. So I would just say, really focus on what I think the public wants to hear, and that their input is going to be listened to, and what you're going to do with it. Thank you. Pleased.
Thank you for the information, great information. And my question is about a specific route, because I was in a meeting yesterday, some of the entrepreneurs in Herndon, and there was a concern that if we have a direct connector to government center, Fairfax, or GMU, they would get more clients in Herndon. Because a lot of students and everybody would come here who do not have ride, and they will come here and eat in the restaurant or buy something. I just wanted to see if we already have that in place, or are we thinking about in future to have the direct connection from here to government center or GMU?
We are considering that, yes. And it's part of the TDP, Transit Development Plan. We understand that the 605 doesn't really help us out, and that has, because it takes so long to get from 28 to 23. And we have a lack of connection to the university from this location.
Okay. Are you considering, or it's already in the plan?
They're already in the plan, but we'll reevaluate. Everything that's in the plan will be reevaluated through this process.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to mention one other thing. The routes, 924 and 926, which are Town of Herndon routes, they actually had a schedule adjustment that was implemented this past Saturday to better coincide with the bell schedule of Herndon High School.
Thank you. Whoever did that, that's huge.
Yeah.
So I had a couple of comments. I know that Randy knows what I'm going to say, because we met several years ago about it. We are really interested in a circulator kind of component for the Town of Herndon, so that people can walk not very far, if possible, to get on a bus, that they can rely on showing up every, I don't know how often, but if it's reliable and close to where they work or live or go to school, they'll get on it and get off the roads to get over to the metro station. So just have to throw a plug out for that. And to the point about reaching in different languages, obviously in Herndon in particular, Spanish is the largest second language, but we certainly have many, many others. And I know you only have so much bandwidth to get out in the community for these meetings, but I know that our schools, in particular, Herndon Elementary and Clearview, which is just outside of the town, that's where the bulk of our kids in town go. They are doing, both schools are doing a lot of outreach to underserved families through bookmobiles and community meetings, and they have parent liaisons that speak all the languages, so it might be something to think about, trying to go to, get in touch with those schools and find out what they're already doing, and have someone there that could reach those families. Because at Clearview, whenever they have, that's where my daughter goes to school, whenever they have an event, they work with Fairfax County Public Schools to have a school bus that goes to Burke Dale Apartments and a couple of other places to provide transportation. So I know there are people who are relying on public transportation, so I know you can't be everywhere, but that might be a place to capture a lot of people that you might not get to come to another meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from anybody around the table? Just one more thing. So I found the survey, and it doesn't work. When I click it, it says it's closed.
It works on mine, but not on hers.
But I, so I searched for it and found it, and then when I click on it, it doesn't work. I can show you if you want. And then I look at Sheila's, her view is different, and her view has English and Spanish, so mine doesn't work, but I'll show you.
What browser are you using?
I don't think it's the browser, because literally we're on two different screens, but both of them say click here to take the survey, but mine doesn't, shouldn't work, so I'm going to show you it. Okay. Yeah. That's why we keep Jenna around, she keeps us on top. Is there, anybody, any other question or comment?
Yeah, usually I'm technically channeling. You got it. Mine is coming through, thank you.
That's a crowning moment, I love it. Well, thank you for all of this. I'm really glad that it's not my job to figure all this out. This is a huge undertaking, and I know you're up for the task, but it's a big one. Thank you.
Thank you again for the time to come out, and we hope to, if you want us to, we'll come back again when we've got the alternatives together and we can bring them to you.
I think we would like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You are more than welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but if you want to make a break forward, I totally understand and expect that, so thank you very much. Okay, so next week, we have one presentation, it's a proclamation for African-American history month. And we do have some individuals coming to accept that, and then we will move right into the presentations, if there are no comments on the, I mean, not the presentations, public hearings. The first is ordinance 18...
Sorry, question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was, was someone assigned to present that?
Yes. I don't recall.
It was Vice Mayor Olum is reading that one.
Okay.
I couldn't recall, thank you.
Yes, I tried to snag it this year, too.
Yes, Signee was second in line, and you're third in line.
Yeah, if there are, when these come out, if there's something that you're interested in reading, let me know, because I just try to kind of go around and get everybody a turn, so...
Just curious what the process is.
It's pretty thorough.
So it's a jump ball?
Yeah, as fast as you see it. Usually people will either request it, or if I know, like, whenever we have DPW, I know Sheila's really a big fan of DPW, so I try to give it to Sheila, but you know, it doesn't really matter to me. She tries to keep it on her hat, but I think we've noticed. Okay. All right, thanks. Public hearings, the first one is ordinance 18035 to authorize the encroachment of the front stoops of these addresses on Monroe Street. This item was continued from the council's December 11th and January 15th public hearings, and our town attorney will provide an update for us, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As indicated, this has been on the agenda previously, and most recently on January 15th, it was continued by agreement of the town and council for the parties to permit amendments to the ordinance requested by both Junction, I'm sorry, Tradition Homes and Junction Square LLC. There was a memo circulated on Friday to council, and you have, also have that for you this evening, showing the amendments were, which were essentially to add insurance to cover the transfer of the HOA property to, from Tradition Homes to Junction Square, and to provide an explanation of the control period that would control the period during which the insurance was being transferred. Nothing has changed with regard to the amount of the encroachment, the place of encroachment, although we did have a, some question about whether or not one of the lots was encroaching or not. We resolved that question, it was correct as submitted to you originally, and remains correct. So essentially, some word changes. I have reviewed all, and turn it over to Mr. Irish, who can explain the more technical details.
As Lisa mentioned, nothing has really at all materially changed. The encroachments are, as indicated on the exhibit, relatively small. They are the result of the actual construction of the stoops of those units overlapping our, it's listed as streetscape easement, I believe it's also considered a public access easement, that quite honestly, the ability to monitor those smaller dimensions is totally upon the developer-owner, and the only way we get an opportunity to check those dimensions would be at the end, when we have what's called a building location survey. So that is the reason that this sort of thing occurs. And essentially, it's just allowing them to have that encroachment, it does not affect our ability to maintain a streetscape or public access to any of our other amenities that are on that, including in the right way.
Questions or comments for Sam?
So a couple of times ago, you suggested to me that there's no way to really prevent encroachments from happening.
Not 100%.
So how did we know there was an encroachment?
As I just mentioned, when we get the completion of a project, particularly when it's a residential, and also in that case a commercial, but residentials are required to give us what's called a building location survey, which essentially generates a document similar to what you see as the exhibit, only with more technical information that essentially takes surveyors, certified, onsite calculations of where property corners, lines, meets and bounds are, and establishes exactly where the built environment is in connection to those. So until that time, we are not, as a town, under our regulatory requirements, going to be doing survey work to establish how they actually are constructing that, that's means and methods typically.
And they don't have to do that as part of that?
They need to for their own constructability, but as far as for us to check it, no, we are not in a position to do that. We're not required to, it's not our obligation.
It's within their interest to do, because one thing you can do is have them abate it, which is take out the stoops, and redo the stoops, but at this stage of the game, is that something that is practical for all parties concerned?
Right.
And so it's really incumbent upon them to check their work, to make sure that they're not going to get a draconian remedy down there.
I'm just worried that, if we're not, I obviously don't want to do anything draconian, but I'm just worried that this will lead people to believe it's A-OK to do that.
I mean, our inspectors check work, but that's not a finite part of what our inspection responsibilities would be. I mean, if there was something egregious, we obviously would probably notice that. I mean, we're talking about relatively tiny dimensions.
Cesar, are you ready? Signee? Well, I'll see where it goes.
No, no, I'm hearing that. The concern I would have is, it may be tiny if you're bipedal, but if you're in a wheelchair, then something like that could potentially narrow it, where, I don't know if there's a tree there or what.
We check, we check all ADA requirements.
I really just don't want to give them the impression that that's okay. Not that, I'm not complaining about what we're doing, I'm not complaining about what they're doing. Like setting the precedent that, oh, we won't make you rebuild it, right?
No, it's only a few inches, and a few meters.
No, but truly, if we would have gone out and checked ADA, and they were an ADA compliant, this would be a whole different conversation, I guarantee you that.
Okay, Signee, did you have something else?
No.
Cesar, did you have one?
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to approve authorization to sign a second lease amendment to T-Mobile Northeast LLC to revise the approved equipment list and increase the rent at the town's Spring Knoll Drive Water Tower. And once again, our town attorney will go over the lease process.
It's more fun than water towers.
This is someone...
We'll make you a rich man. So just briefly, for this council, the new council members, and this council, which I don't think has approved a water tower lease since 2015, I will just explain the process pursuant to state code 15.22100, which regulates leases and franchises and other transfers of property. The town has the authority to lease for less than 40 years. In this case, the general term of a lease has been 15 years. The water tower leases are 15 years, these are both 15 years. Both of these have had two amendments, I'm sorry, one amendment, this would be the second amendment. Typically, when you're granting a lease to begin initially, you have to take bids, if you're, those of you that have sat through previous leases or franchises, we are not taking bids for this lease, because it is an amendment of an existing lease. They are simply switching out equipment and making some other minor changes to the lease. Tammy is here, if you have any questions regarding the actual process, I'd be happy to answer them, but anything technical goes to Tammy, and we also have, just so they can gain information from this meeting, we also have representatives from T-Mobile.
Lisa, does this, does something like this require a roll call vote?
There will be a roll call.
Okay, that's what I thought. Which means we call one at a time, if you're not familiar with that, to pass your vote.
It's kind of procedural, but if it's a amendment to the lease, does that start from year one? I mean, does, from the amendment, is that a 15-year, or is it a continue? Okay, just because...
We're amending the terms, all, everything else remains the same, except for, in this case, with the...
Just making sure, because that's a...
Okay. Tammy, did you have any staff report or anything for us?
Yeah.
Or did you need to ask questions? I mean, I don't want to make you miss your time in the spotlight.
No, this one, for Spring Knoll, is basically to add a generator to an existing enclosure, and basically to change around, as Lisa mentioned, some of the equipment, different TMA's already use all these ancillary pieces of equipment to make the whole system work. This would also increase the rent by $400 for the addition of the generator, which is subject to annual escalation.
Pursuant to the original, the original terms had included the, the...
The acceleration clause?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Questions or comments about this for Lisa or Tammy? Okay, thank you. And the next one is similar, it's an ordinance to approve and authorize the signing of a lease amendment to T-Mobile Northeast LLC for the additional ground space, to revise the approved equipment list and increase the rent at the town's Alabama Drive Water Tower.
This one is, as you mentioned, a generator, and it also includes the enclosure and the pad, which is not at Spring Knoll currently, so this one would be a full-blown enclosure generator. And this one, too, increases by $400, annual escalation.
Okay, questions or comments on the outing drive? Did you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. Pretty straightforward. Thank you guys for being here. The next items are general items. The first one is a resolution to provide the town manager with council guidance for the fiscal year 2020 budget, and Bill Ashton, our town manager, will give us an update.
This is the extension of our discussion item from two weeks ago, where we discussed what the budget guidance that you all were interested in for next year, showed some themes that have been previous...
Showed some themes that have been previous that seem to be something you'd want to continue as well as some of the other discussion elements that we've talked about at the table. What we've tried to do is group them into certain areas in case, including in the resolution. Fund activities will advance the vision. That includes sustainability, is still a priority for you all. Um, downtown redevelopment is still a priority, um, and arc center facility is still a priority, and maintaining focus on technology are all still, still priorities of this council and we are going to, to attempt to fund those, those elements that have become a priority in the funding streams for next year's, uh, budget, proposed budget. Um, we're also looking to, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I jump in real quick? I don't know that, did we get, I don't think we got the copy of the extended vision statement with all of the.
Yeah, we're still working on it.
Okay.
Actually, we are working on that feverishly right now because the extended vision statement is all, it's very hard to read documents because.
And you're trying to.
And we're trying to call out the things that we've already accomplished and focus on the things that are still to be done.
Okay.
And so we've taken that document, it's now down around nine pages or so, fifty-seven pages we once had, and we're just massaging it and I kind of got distracted by the things, but we're going to get back to it.
Perfect. Just want to make sure that's still on the, on the list.
No, it's still on. It is on the list.
All right, cool. Thank you, sorry.
Certainly, no, I'm well. Um, we're also looking to fund activities of demonstrated commitment to investment in town employees. These include, you know, funding training, these include maintaining competitive employment position and getting a market. Um, we are looking at ways to enhance our strong fiscal position, um, look at rising costs associated with program service delivery. Um, we're looking at, uh, removing the one percent tie from the meals tax to the year mark to, to have it go back to a general fund, um, just general, general fund related expenditures. We're looking towards budget preparation, anticipation of impacts associated with metro and downtown redevelopments, and we're looking at attempting to tackle the lifecycle maintenance issue that we discussed last time where it sits in the capital budget and it really is an operational question. So how do we transition that from capital into operations and we're wrestling with that right now? Other things that we've talked about, um, we're gonna, and one of the new concepts that came up at the last meeting was we're going to prepare an annual budget that addresses these things, but if it comes down to, we, and there is a need for doing something with tax rates at some various points, we will look at that and that will be obviously part of the conversation again. It's not, we're not, we're going to try to do this at the current rates the best we can, but if it truly comes down to making some, some very difficult choices, we realize that you all will support us if, if we need to do something for inappropriate reasons. And so we will, we will certainly bring that to you. As we go through the process, we've already started meeting as, um, as individual department has, we have two departments in this morning, in this morning with the budget team. Uh, we're going to have probably two again tomorrow. It's going to be over the next two weeks, we're talking to the departments, we're going to start rolling this up, we'll start meeting with you all, I think, in second week of February, third week of February, and then you'll get a better understanding of where we are as we move forward with this. Um, at this time, I'll take any questions you might have regarding the, uh, the resolution that we've written and if, if there's anything that needed to be added, subtracted, changed, uh, if I heard you wrong two weeks ago, uh, please let me know.
Cool. Anybody have anything to add or question? Budget guidance. Sheila?
So, we talked about changing the percentage that the community center had to be responsible for.
Yes, yes.
Is that going to be?
That is still, we're still going, we're still going to be discussing that.
So that we can.
Absolutely.
See how that's going to work.
Absolutely.
So, Ken, I know you have another thing, but can I add on to that? I know that I sent out an email that I had gotten asking about Wi-Fi at the community center and there was a pretty decent discussion.
Right.
That I did not participate in, but I did see on Facebook.
If I have my druthers here, we'll get that sooner before this budget takes effect.
Well, the reason I thought of it with what Sheila just said was people were saying, well, you know, if I knew that I could come and, you know, do work while my kids are in ballet or whatever, we would probably sign up for more things, so it might also help with. I'm not opposed to lowering the percentage.
Once that discussion started, I did task the IT director to work with Cindy and begin a conversation on updating all of these quotes, the quotes we had here, like five years ago when technology obviously has since changed quite a bit. Is there ways for us to target certain areas instead of trying to get immersion throughout the entire building which has very, well, you know, secret cities, you have a, you have a four, four-hour burn wall in there, you have a two-hour burn wall in there, um, which penetrating radio signals through those things is, could be troublesome, but can we focus on areas where parents wait? Can we focus on maybe back in the fitness center? Can we focus on, do we have to put one in the, in, in the pool where you need, uh, all-weather access points because of the humidity and now various other things like that? Take some of the, uh, some of the constristing constraints we had before we moved them and just focus on areas where we.
See what might be possible, Sydney.
We might be able to pull this off. And so that, that question has been sent to Paige and Cindy. I'm waiting on something back. If it is something that we can tackle this fiscal year, let's do it.
Thank you for letting me borrow.
Yeah, that was part of it too, was that I don't think that should matter on the percentage and if that's going to cost us a huge amount of money, then those individuals should pay for that instead of, um.
Yeah. I think those are all the things we need to keep looking at.
Without a doubt.
Yeah. But, I mean, it's just to the point where if I go somewhere and they don't offer Wi-Fi, I don't want to be there. You know, it's just, that's just kind of how we are.
Oh, no.
If I go to the grocery store, if that grocery store doesn't have it, I'm not coming back, I'm going to one that does so I can pull my stuff.
It's the worst ever to her.
Yeah. No, you're absolutely right. I mean, I just think about sitting in my house and my kids, friends come, our first thing happens, well, it's Wi-Fi, they want to go. I mean, it's, and it's where I go too. I'm looking for that as well. This makes perfectly good sense. Let's figure out if we can do this in a cost-effective way, and let's pull the trigger this year and not wait.
And it doesn't have to be in every.
Why wait?
Right.
If we can get it for a reasonable cost, let's, let's get it done. I was able to do this building much, much less, at least the HMC and this building much, much less than originally budgeted, and so let's take a look at that.
Um, if I'd heard you say in the second or third week of February, you'll be completing the departments.
Yeah, just the departments, look at what their operational needs are.
So that would certainly help me sort of like focus where their priorities or needs are.
So we'll bring them in two at a time and the budget team will be there and we'll have a cheat sheet, like a, it's not more than a sheet, it's probably about a cheat seven sheets. It'll be, it'll be general revenue projections, it'll be where, where our cost drivers are, it'll be what is, what are folks really thinking are big budget pressures and give a general understanding of where we are from an expenditure side. Uh, the revenue side won't be, that picture won't be completely painted yet. We'll have some preliminary estimates, we won't know for another couple, maybe a week or two after that, and that's where we'll sit down with you, walk you through that sheet and we take your input as to what is, you know, what are the puts and takes that you're interested in doing here?
Well, I, I think for me, what, what I would like or find more valuable is from them, gotta have, can't live without. At least they have, if I have that.
We have that sheet.
Okay.
We have that sheet. Everything is prioritized, everything is.
Make it simple, no like grayed half moons and crescents.
No, 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 no.
Gotta have, can't live without.
I'm not that creative.
I second that.
I'll tell you, I'm not that creative. I'm more of a literal guy.
Executive briefings.
I'm more of a literal guy. I don't look for that. And I'll be honest with you, when she brought that to me, I went, what am I looking at?
No, it was good, it was good, but it was in color, we have black and whites.
Right. So we'll walk through that two by two, we'll take, entertain your questions and that will help inform us, and then when we get in the balancing act a week or two later, when we have a full revenue picture and we try to make the two numbers come, come together, that's when we take your input and start kind of massaging what we've got to what we're anticipating receiving via revenue. And then that'll be, then by that time it's mid-March, it goes to print and you have it April one.
So from April to June, we can massage it, basically?
You can. We, we would, we would hope to have a budget sooner than later and hopefully I give you one that you don't need a whole lot of massaging. Hopefully I've been listening to you and incorporating that in during the process. Um, and I would just, you know, just communicate with me, let's get it in and let's get it done, you know. This year it's not as important as last year because we don't, we're not going to get, rating agencies aren't, aren't waiting to see our budget like they were last year. This year we have a little bit of flexibility, but that being said, some, I, I've been to, I've been to councils that ran it all the way up to the bitter end and it's a little disconcerting, um, staff and, because you don't know what's going to pop out, so if we can try to get the work done sooner, that's obviously, I think, better for, for us, but it truly is, you don't have to have an adopted budget till July one, so.
But what is, what do you consider sooner?
Well, if we can get it in April, great. If we, if you aren't comfortable with where we are in April and you want to push it into May, you know, that, that, that's fine. We, we'll work with you. And we'll work the end of June, but, but it's not optimal for us, but we'll work with it.
Especially if we haven't discussed it and we keep changing it.
Right.
Hopefully we've discussed it and if.
I was at that meeting, but I wasn't on council.
I will try, I will.
Oh, I remember that.
You remember that?
I'll remember that.
Yes. Well, what we hope to avoid is the worst-case scenario is leave us with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar budget on the day, that's, that's never, that, I was at one of those too.
Yeah, I think that's the one you were talking about.
Yeah, that's not a good one.
The back room where you guys kept running in here.
Yeah.
I was here.
That was fun.
Well, I think that if everybody is frank in those two-by-two meetings with what's important and what's not important.
We will build it.
Because we would like to try to.
I'm building this for you all. Yeah, that's, this is for you all, so.
And the discussion about whether or not we need to keep our tax rate or go up or down as what, and not.
And hopefully the two-by-twos is when we're sitting in March.
Right.
If, if we are getting, if we're closing, you say, look, I think we need to move a tax rate to meet this demand rather than cut the demand. And that's what, that's truly the sense of this council. Then let, then we will know in February, we'll get it advertised in March and we'll be good to go by April. Advertising is our issue on the tax rates. We got to make sure.
It has to have two-time advertisement.
Yes.
Other questions or comments or concerns?
I have one comment and I meant to bring it. So I got my renewal of my, um, permit for my business out of my house because of the type of business I do. I sell insurance, but I don't collect any money. I just get a, um, commission from the company, so I don't pay anything. Seems to me with to save staff time on people like myself, so that they didn't have to mess with it, that no change and then they can renew it because there hadn't been any change, I don't have to report revenues.
We talked to Jenny.
Because I'm not getting revenues. I've asked this every year because it's like, why are we all wasting our?
Well, we have a new tax system now, so is there an opportunity to then capitalize as new features that could potentially do that?
Yes. Because I fill mine out and you can come to my house and see my little permit, I'm legal. No one ever comes in my house for business, but it's there. But it does just seem like a waste and I've saved every one of them.
Let me ask Jenny, like, so we switch, we, this, over this past year, we switched tax systems and so if there's a way for us to do that in the new tax system to.
Yeah, I don't mind filling stuff out, I'm just saying if we could kind of save staff time on that.
Perfectly agree.
And if you look at how many other people might do that type of business in town, I bet it's thousands of dollars that we could save and just say, no change and keep going.
I will.
But if they want to come check out my house again, happy to have them.
I'm seeing Jenny a lot this week, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I had an inspector come in and so forth, so.
Oh, I will ask.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments or suggestions?
Make sure I can see you, you're right behind Sydney.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. Okay, great, thank you. Um, next is a resolution to amend the existing Tyler Technologies contract to add the EnerGov module, and I'm sure that Paige is going to tell us what that means.
Yes. Good evening, I'm Mayor and members of council. Just going to give you a brief information about this EnerGov solution. So, as you know, um, we've been using Navoline as our permitting and, um, permitting and building expansion module. So now there was a need to, um, with the upcoming expansions, the downtown redevelopment, metro civil light coming up, there's going to be a lot of needs for, for engagement of the, the new permitting application. So with EnerGov, what we're doing is bringing this service online, adding the reviews, so, um, this is going to be pretty much paperless and more efficient citizen engagement, uh, a module that's going to be tied into our existing Tyler, um, software that we currently have. So this is going to allow citizens to actually track their case online, to see any notes, to communicate directly with the inspector on any issues, and big part of this is also mobility that's going to be, inspectors will be able to go in the field with a tablet and, and the connection and, and do the inspection on, on the field, make the notes, print it out, leave it on paper, um, if they need to or, um, follow the case to the, the whole workflow. Now, um, the implementation of this project is going to take about a year actually because we'll be working with Tyler to convert existing data, historic data, and tie it into the existing Tyler Technology System. So, um, this is pretty much, um, going to be our go-to, um, solution for the part of the public work, so we're going to help them get there. You can see the cost here and breakdown of the modules that are going to be included, but basically through the discovery, we narrowed it down, we created a pretty large requirement list together with inspectors, you know, what are going to be major points for us, the selling points, and what can we help city, citizen engagement to, to be online and more transparent. Basically, and we selected the EnerGov as a complete product that meets all these standards. So our recommendation is to amend the existing contract, add the EnerGov module, which was originally Tyler's product, but they did a really good job of implementing that into their suite and, um, and create this next generation, our permitting solution.
And if I could try one point, how the, the annual maintenance costs that you're seeing here get offset because we're letting Navoline expire. It's the last module in Navoline, um, so that we will no longer pay annual service subscription to Navoline, so it's actually only a few thousand dollars more annually to get EnerGov over the Navoline system, but it also opens the door, offers to use this to solve some planning and zoning issues we have because it works with planning and zoning as well, so.
Well, it's less in the long run, like, a lot. You're just saying in the initial.
Yeah, the initial step, step across.
Oh, Cesar.
So, um, the initial implementation, I assume these have upgrades beyond 2021?
The initial implementation will consist of, of migration of the existing data, this is extraction from the old Navoline system, which sits in the cloud, so we're going to extract that, then convert it to the EnerGov format, then import it there and make sure that ties to exactly existing cases, right? So we're still, we're still going to have access to, to everything that was in, in the work, in the process, right? So any cases that are happening in Navoline during the implementation process, we'll have to decide if they're going to be finished in Navoline depending how far they went or they will be carried over to the new system, right? So that's the part of the implementation, the number one. Number two is the, the actual cost of subscription, so enabling the mobility piece where we're going to be adding that application to be available and also, um, adding the portal and hosting services from Tyler.
So is that part of the implementation?
That's part of the implementation. Then after that, it's going to be flat sixty-eight thousand dollars a year versus close to eighty-six thousand what we pay right now for Navoline.
Okay, so beyond 2021, you have a system.
Right.
That's in place, do they provide upgrades?
They do, and that's, that's part of the scope. So the upgrades are provided through the regular lifecycle of the software and also ties with our Tyler. So in, actually next year, end of, end of the, uh, third quarter, this year they're going to have a Tyler hub for, for clients like us. So right now, we log into our munis, Tyler munis, so after that, they're going to have different links for, for example, EnerGov or employment, employee cell service, so they're going to be tied into the Tyler hub where it's going to be centrally located. And again, this, this, uh, EnerGov is going to be central repository for all the permits versus, um, what was done before on, on case-to-case basis now. And again, reducing the, the whole paperwork trail, it's going to be huge just having the e-review and everything available to the staff and to the citizens.
So it's okay, I mean, it's okay if we're not budgeting additional implementation costs after upgrades.
Cool.
That's fine.
Correct.
I would put that in there to get the true cost. Because if you plan on keeping the system in place.
Right.
And, oh, wow, I like that, I like that feature, gee, it's going to cost 15, 20, 100 grand to implement it. I would just make that part of the request.
In the beginning, it's going to be hard because we're just, we've got a budget, so we're using two funding sources.
I'd throw a number out there. Honestly, it's, for us, it's more palatable to say, okay, well, we didn't spend 50, we didn't spend 100, as opposed to, oh, I need another 50 or I need another 100. That's just my take on it. So I would just ask for it, rather than leave it out. Because you know it's going to happen.
And I think that's the point. As we, as we look to expand to CD, I think that's where it's going to come to play. Routine upgrades and maintenance, that's all built into the base contract, and it's a cloud system, it just gets.
I know cloud. But what I'm saying is, is you still have costs.
No, no. So when we look to expand downfield to CD or whatever, let's, yeah.
Correct. And user adoption being also big expenditure we buy in in the beginning. So having our engineers train into the new system, it always adds that first year, right? And after that, as we streamline and becomes primary tool, I think we're going to be successful with it. But yes, I will definitely take that in consideration by adding that.
Okay, thanks.
Pradeep.
So this one, so we are doing the data migration from the existing server to the new one, right?
Correct.
So are we going to keep the existing server for a certain time and then eventually retire it?
Correct, yeah.
Do we, at some point, do we pay fees for both servers, or how does that work?
So we do, so, so, but, so since we've been migrating stuff out of the Navoline, as we do this migration in blocks, we reduce that contract down to pay for all the services that we use. So right now, we only have these three modules there left, right? So now, well, part of this is when we take the data over and migrate, we do the data validation. So for that, during that period of time, you need both systems to have to make sure everything is accurately reported in one and another one. In this case, you will, you actually show the transparency that everything is double-checked. And then, once everything has been verified on both systems and data matches, then we can close down the other system and disconnect it.
All right, and another one is, so once we do that, obviously, we will save a lot of time for people as well, right? Because everything will be automated and everything will be mostly using the technology. So what do we do to educate the clients who will be using that? That we have that in place and that's how you use it, how do we do that?
Very, very good question. So the clients are coming, actually, so this is, this is making consideration of the clients. EnerGov is a, is a very popular product, very streamlined, right? So during the software discovery part, we did due diligence with all the existing counties. So Fairfax County uses part of the EnerGov, so they don't really use EnerGov for permitting, but the e-review is there. So if you need to share the file for the review for fire marshals, they will be able to do it through the system. We can open the part of the EnerGov for their, as a guest, so they can review, so they're reviewers, right? On the case-to-case basis, case-per-case basis. For engineering firms and people that submit the application, it's going to be very simple, just like clicking the link and uploading the documents there in the format, right? So they, they don't have to come here, they don't have, they can follow their case online, and everything is going to be streamlined. And this way, I think we're going to have a learning curve, again, here, training the staff and engineering part to, not only to work with this, but take full advantage of the mobility and the full suite of the software applications that come with it. So I think it's going to be, you know, a year of the growing pain, but in the end.
I think the customers that include like the engineering firms, and I think they use this elsewhere. So it'll be a really easy sell to move them across and get them into using it here as well.
Bill?
I think Pradeep actually had his question, but I was in regards to mapping over from one technology. Do you have concerns about the data loss, but if you're going from one server to the other, and you're keeping the legacy server in place? I think that kind of answers the question in regards to lost data, because.
Absolutely. We'll have triple validation, so in the end, we'll have the expert, and none of the data gets to be deleted.
Right.
So going forward, we'll, we'll have everything archived and kept offline in case we have to reference something that's 10, 15 years old for historical purpose, because these permits, they can, they can go back in time, and this is more of the engineering questions, but we'll have the data ready.
And in all fairness and history, Tyler Technologies have been really, really good in terms of the QA they put into the data migration. And that has slowed this project down considerably of points, because we, our QA was so exhaustive, and our testing was so exhaustive during the QA process, that we'll make sure we have solid data sets going in there before we go live. And if there are any anomalies, we'll obviously deal with them. But Tyler Technologies has done a very fine job with the QA side of the house for us, and our people as well, working with them, so.
What technology do they do that, too?
For this? In the, in the backend?
Yeah.
It's proprietary.
Yeah, but the way we get the data dumps, I think it's a sequel, but just by looking at the file structure.
Yeah.
Jen, how many, so I think this is great. And well done on saving money, even though there's the initial upfront cost. It's obviously better for personnel and for long-term cost. Which departments are, how many people, how many town employees use this today? Or will use this, the new benefit of this?
The new benefit, so this is the best part about it. So this is going to expand to more and more departments, right? We are starting with, so we're doing the gradual approach. So in first year, we are doing the pure needs such as, this is a permitting department, and, what do you call it? It's, I'll tell you exactly. So that's part of the public works, community development, building inspection, and permitting. They're going to be first ones. And then, as we integrate more services in it, and if there is need for, to add, to add anything additional, then we can expand this. Again, this is tied with our existing Tyler infrastructure, so it goes back to the financials, so tax, property, everything is going to be part of the system. So when you apply for permit, you can look up actually the history of that, of the property and the owners, if there's any outstanding issues. And the best part is going to be tied with our Tyler cashiering for online payments, because the engine will not go on the site unless the payment for the inspection has been made ahead of time. So everything is going to be streamlined this way.
And so, in terms of how many, so obviously, it's a lot, but.
Department-wise, yeah, these, these three, so I don't know.
Is there just, what, four, five in building inspections?
There's minimum of five, probably six, and then you've got all the, what will be the site plan review process, which is, again, I don't know.
So currently, five, and we're probably going to close to 20 when all's set up.
But you're right, don't forget that this also ties into the permanent fees, so it's also whoever deals with accounts payable, revenue downstairs.
I was asking too, because, oh, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, one of the, one of the things that is not good about our current system is anybody doing permitting is two times. They're going upstairs, doing their business up there, and then they're always going back downstairs and doing another set of business down there. And this would hopefully eliminate that whole thing.
Because it looked like on the quote implied like 25, but that could just be sometimes.
That's the number.
That's number, yeah, so that includes the, the guys in the field, the mobility for us, also for whoever needs to log into the system. And these could be, again, transferred as our guest licenses. So if you need an outside firm to come in and review the plan, if there's any dispute or anything that's going on, they can log in and use that to work with our inspector.
And I probably mentioned this before, but for what it's worth, one of my very best friends in the world is an engineer at Tyler Technologies. And has worked there, she's worked there over 10 years, so, and does talk about it as I do. It gives me lots of assurance that we are using absolutely the best product from municipalities. It seems like they are the, kind of the only game in town for the things we're doing, so I think it's.
And they're swallowing up everybody else's.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Paige. That brings us to the consent agenda, which is unusually large, but they are all, the rest of. Appointing everyone that we, that we discussed in our closed session a couple weeks ago. Are there questions or comments on the ones that are listed here, Sheila?
Yeah, there was only one. I thought we said that chairs would be appointed by the committee, and we weren't going to appoint.
Which one is that?
That was the energy committee.
So number 16.
Or maybe I didn't hear that right.
It just says, the resolution to reinstate the. No, it states me as the chair. Oh, well, then can we, we did decide that the committee, so can we strike that?
We can strike, yeah, sure, consider.
Good eye, Sheila.
I was making sure I wasn't on things that I didn't ask.
I know, I look at her more too. Could you strike that and make Sheila chair of everything?
No.
And don't tell her. I'm surprised, because it's her favorite. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, that brings us to roundtable. Who wants to start? Bill?
All right, just last week, public session was really good in regards to input from the town. Like, for example, Jess Smith called a comment about deferring some bills for government employees like water. I think that would be something to look at.
Actually, I can brief you on that now, I've already looked into it. Right now, the code reads, gives us no latitude to provide any relief on water bills, per se. I can waive interest in late fees, which I would gladly do, I mean, for this is extenuating. I have latitude to do that, but as far as waiving a water bill, I cannot under the current code. Now, what we have done is, is we've gone out and we've surveyed, we have a list of aid agencies that we can certainly publicize for folks to try to get aid to help with this, in this time. But it's, yeah, I was sitting at the dais, and I emailed Jenny Wright from the dais, and she had an answer back within the next, within two days.
Yeah, I think if we can communicate that, that would be really good for people. And also, for example, I know Cox Communications is offering relief as well for people during the shutdown. So I think, again, it's a, it's a utility that people use, so I think it might be something to kind of tie in. So that's, I just thought that was a really good idea, and I honed in on that. Steve Mon's idea about having an ordinance shoveling sidewalks, I don't think that's, you know, for.
We have.
I can talk to Steve, we have a commercial, yeah, for commercial, it exists.
Okay.
We also said have something in there about homeowners are supposed to shovel.
It's not an ordinance.
But it's not an ordinance.
We don't, it's a recommendation. This council will never vote for that.
Well, I think, and just to, and just to clarify, particularly for the new council members, if you weren't part of those discussions in the past, but the reason we didn't, or at least so far, councils haven't agreed to an ordinance for homeowners, is it also puts a burden on our police to then take it, right? So it's like, if you're going to put an ordinance, you better enforce it, and we weren't willing to say we would enforce that. And when our police, we want them used for other things, when there's a snowstorm. So it's just sort of a, like you said, a recommendation and.
That wouldn't be the police, it would be zoning. That would be.
It would be the police.
It would be.
It would be.
Because you'd have to issue them a ticket.
Sidewalks, it's the police.
So how come if my shed's not in the right place, zoning comes out?
That's on your part. Sidewalks are in the right way.
Yeah.
Thank you for context. I wasn't part of that, so that's good to know. And then, when we had the home care, daycare situation, you know, about streamlining process, and I think combination of some of the things that were said in public comment with that, I think, kind of seeing if we can, you know, work on those things and even, you know, have public discussions with the public in regards to trying to make those a little easier. I think that would just make it.
Can I jump in on that?
Yeah, please do.
Because we had talked at one time, the previous council, with the town attorney about possibly moving some of the special exceptions to the BZA's approval, that the county does that for certain, certain special exceptions.
I know.
And this one in particular. So if, if that is something that the council decides to do, then by nature of it being a BZA issue, instead of going through the planning commission and the council, it would cut that timeframe.
And those advertising requirements.
Right. So what is involved in us trying to do that? Does it need some?
An ordinance amendment, which would be a zoning text amendment, which would be initiated by council, and it would have to go to the planning commission. Planning commission would make the recommendation, back to council, council would adopt. So the, so the initial time period would be approximately two months to make the amendment to the zoning ordinance. And then it would be, I think, a pretty streamlined process to train BZA to handle those sort of.
Is that something that the councils would like to either have a discussion about? Or maybe we're having a discussion right now and have it on a future agenda to have that ZODA go forward?
I would say having a discussion with something in writing, I hate passing.
Oh, absolutely.
With nothing in writing.
Well, it would be in writing, it would be on the agenda.
No, but I don't want to say, we're going to do this right now.
Right, yeah. So let's put that on, I'm getting the sense that council would like to put that as a discussion, because there may be other things that come up in that discussion with the BZA.
I can do that. That's all.
I dumped right in, I'm sorry.
No, it's perfect, it's probably fine. That's all I have, is just, I thought it was a great meeting last week.
And I had BZA daycare on my list, so now I'm upset. Who, who's ready to go next? Just go around, Pradeep?
Yes. Nothing much to update, so it was a great first public session for me. And a few things after that, I went to Leesburg. There was a business place that was opening there that I knew, and I went there. It's like a commercial kitchen, where actually people can actually, you know, a lot of people, me, want to start a home business with food, right? For example, people are good at cooking, and their food is good, and people love it. And, but, you know, the licensing process is very arduous, and on top of that, if you want to get the license, I mean, to get a cooking license at your residential, you know, condition is very hard, right? So what they offer is, they offer a commercial kitchen at a very reasonable price, like $25 per hour or something.
Oh, to rent that commercial kitchen?
Yeah, and through that, the licensing process will be so easy, because they normally help. So that means if somebody wants to open a home-based, you know, food business, they can lease the place over there. $25 per hour is not a big money, and they can actually cook there, make it ready, and supply, or whatever they want to do. I wish we had something like that in Herndon, you know? I think that will definitely inspire a lot of people to start a home-based food business over here, because I know a lot of people want to do it, but the licensing is really hard, and especially, you don't have a commercial kitchen with the home setup. It's almost impossible, right? So one thing, I really love that idea they have over there. And I believe if we had something over here, that would be really good. Another thing is, I was also invited to a meeting by some Herndon entrepreneurs. And, you know, there were people from Rowan Tree, there were, you know, Rachel from Ellen Street Tea, and, you know, Peggy O'Reilly, and a lot of people. I was invited by Danielle, and they're doing pretty good, actually, inspiring entrepreneurs to open the business, and I like their idea. And like, I always advocate entrepreneurship, right? I think helping people out with their ideas, licensing, whatever they have done. I mean, a lady was telling me that it took her six months to set up the license and everything to do the job. Now I ask her, like, if somebody wants to open the similar type of business, would you be able to streamline their process to get the license in two weeks? And she was like, absolutely. And I think we need those kind of people and processes in place so that, you know, it will be so easy for people to. Sometimes information is there, but it's very hard to find out. So I really love their idea, and I was very glad to be part of that meeting, just to update you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Sydney? So everybody's taken all mine. But I did want to feed off of what Pradeep was just saying, and also what, what Bill was saying. I've had some conversations over the past few weeks with residents who'd like what I called to them a boutique, business-oriented town. What we're trying to create in our downtown is small, individual businesses, mom-and-pop-type places. Obviously, there's going to be some variety, but everybody who started a small business in town has come to me and said, this is onerous and horrible, and it takes forever. So it's pretty obvious, and I think we all know that we need to do something about it, and we just don't know where to go with it. Obviously, you've got wonderful ideas, and Danielle has got wonderful ideas. I'm wondering if the, if the Economic Development Committee could be tasked to help us with this? Because those are people who've got it, it's, it's in their blood. They want to make sure that this is a great town for business. And not just the, the big businesses that know how to get everything done, but the smaller businesses that are just kind of wading through all the questions. And Rachel came up with a big list of questions for all of us, which I actually never answered, shamingly, but. Rachel has a lot of good ideas. Yeah. But, but that's a nice starting place for us to just look at and say, you know, this is something that a local business has asked us, and, you know, why don't we go through and answer these questions and create a handbook or something? I'm surprised we haven't already, maybe we have, and I just didn't know, but.
We have, we've done some work on that in the past, I recall, a few years ago.
But apparently, it's still really problematic for businesses, so.
Let me go back, talk to Dennis.
Maybe that could be one of our community meetings, too. It's a good idea. There are two, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, and also, I think we have some resources, really, to all of these businesses that you mentioned, and Weir Brothers and Mused, they all are networking kind of on their own, and they could probably be a resource for new businesses, and I think they would want to, so.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And there is another guy who keeps hopping up on my radar, Bernard Ferret, from the George Mason Incubator Program. And he said that he could do something small in Herndon. They have something in Leesburg, and they have something on the other end of the county. But he said they could do something. now, but he said they could do something in the town of Hernan with education and preparation. So that's, we've got CPU, we've got the George Mason incubator, and we've got this Loudon, what was it called, Loudon Chef Space or something like that? I think I saw.
Chef's.
Chef's, yeah. And Danielle and I even sort of batted around the idea of opening a Robert's Carpet place, but the price keeps going up, so no. And it's sort of.
You have that problem, too?
Yeah, well, no, no, I talked to somebody who keeps trying to buy that spot, and every time he asks, it's $500,000 or more.
That does, that's, that's why you're.
And it's still free spell.
It's just a, what is it called, a bait and switch, yeah. You want it, you can't have it. Anyway, that's my good ideas. Caesar?
Thank you. These, these items are more operational, I think after tomorrow's orientation, I can give you some more strategic things I'd like to see. So first one, transparency, thank you for making those work session audios available, very cool. I think we may have had hit upon or opened an unintended consequence. I'm not sure if ADA or 508 compliance would apply to us, I'm gonna get ahead of that curve if that does come up. Because we are providing the audio, my gut tells me we may have to provide a textualized transcript. So again, unintended consequence. And the same thing, since it's on our website, do we then, does 508 then apply to us? So that.
We've looked at that before and discussed that.
My gut says yes, so.
We can give you a.
Just putting that out there.
Give council.
Putting that out there. And again, again, under the, under the guise of, this is a double-edged sword, transparency, there can also be too much information. And one of the things I started to think about was, and you can check me on this in Robert's rules, is I think it's better that when a council member is not present or not at a meeting, we not broadcast that they are out of town. This is just something I personally, I mean, if I'm out of town, I don't want anyone saying publicly I'm out of town.
I don't.
Right.
Jen told me that I could say that.
I'm not, I'm not pointing, I'm just saying, I think, you know, in Robert's rules, all it says is present, not present.
Gotcha.
There is no delineation to where the person is, and in the meeting minutes, it's, I think, inappropriate to disclose where someone is. Unless they, they want to say, hey, I went to, you know, visit my dying relative or something, I think that's, but then that's the individual wanting that disclosed. I think the standard practice ought to be, if they're not here, or just they're not saying.
So I hear you that you don't want me to say if you're out of town, and if anybody let me know, the reason that we have done that in the past with the permission of, like when Jen's like, hey, tell people, I'm at this, people, we, I think that Jen didn't want people to think she just didn't show up, like she has a day job and a work commitment, and that's why she wasn't here, so, but I, I hear you. And I agree, this is why I don't say, you know, I have my phone out, cause my children are home alone, right? And they might need to reach me, like I'm not gonna say that.
I don't want you guys telling people, I'm not here, and send you down. That's my concern. In that, again, a little TMI, and this is just some constructive feedback, I think it's important to think about, you know, we as council members, you know, what we see, how we perceive things, it's certainly valuable, but it's not always required. And you think about Robert's rules, if we're giving each member three to five minutes to speak on a specific topic, and we're taking that time, that's a long ass time, right? And I'm just gonna ask you all to think about, do I need to comment on something? So think about, you know, choose, and I include myself with that, you know, so my, my commitment is, I'm not gonna talk just to talk, cause I wanna add value. And here's a hint, I've always said this, if you think you're talking too much, you are, okay? So, and that's, and I'm not gonna suggest we do it, but if there is some, some time limit that we all agree to, I know I've watched other predecessors to these, council members just go on, and I'm okay with the presiding officer shutting me down if I ever get back, so I kinda, and that's, that's it for me, again, operational, looking for.
Thank you. Jen?
I don't have anything for today, other than I'll say, yeah, I'm sorry I missed last week, I would hate to miss our very first public hearing, and it was unfortunate with the, because January 1st was a Tuesday, so everything was shifted, cause I thought I was all set, and I was like, oh shoot. So this was, and it was a global sales meeting that I couldn't really get out of, since there was 20 to 100 other people invited to the same event, so they didn't care that my schedule didn't work well, but it's all good. Sorry I missed it, I'll be here next week.
Everybody has a day job, and I like having a diversity of experiences here, so some, everybody's gonna miss a meeting for something, it's all good. Sheila?
Yeah. CD is here.
CD's here.
I got a nice comment, so especially after our last public hearing, these people called because someone got a letter from zoning about something, some addition that they had done that hadn't been completed, and it was, the poor guy's just had a devastating six weeks, he lives over off of Stewart, and his son committed suicide after doing something else. And then, a part of his homework, and he got this letter, and he was kinda disheveled and finally got back, and when he did, because he got this letter saying, you have to get this to us by this date, and whoever he spoke to, and I'm sorry I didn't write the name down, okay, he was thrilled to death with how polite and considerate and empathetic you were, and when you told him, oh, obviously you can't get us that when it's done, cause it's gonna be about eight months, but he was very appreciative, I mean, he's been through heck and back with what had happened, and his younger son used to hang at my house, cause he and Matt were friends, so I've known this guy for a while, and so, thank you, thank you, they really appreciate it.
Building inspection.
Probably.
And just he goes along.
And if you recall last, last year's holiday luncheon, he's the one that won all the great customer service awards.
No wonder.
He might be a contender again this year.
It was one of those situations where obviously didn't know what the backstory was, and once you found out, you weren't accommodating.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's a real nice guy, I go to their neighborhood parties when they have come over there, and like I said, I've known his son, and so I met a wedding not too long ago with one of my others, Matt's, one of their mutual friends got married, so we all have to see each other at that. The other thing is, I've been getting a barrage of calls from people freaking out about having parties, so you should be getting lots of people coming to your home, when they are coming to your office, and getting that little noise permit, yeah, they're gonna bring that.
No, they're afraid to.
You get the noise permits like I do.
I haven't seen it, I haven't heard about it, but.
So, yeah, I'm like, you are fine, you can still have your party, we've been doing it for years, we go get that, we even get the cones, and I said, that way they let the police know that you're having a party, so when your neighbor calls and says, they're cutting noise, they can say, yes, they have a noise permit until 10:00 PM. So I did explain that that doesn't cost anything, you just go in there and hang out with Bill and Michelle, and you write it out, this bill, and so people were, had their minds at ease, cause they were afraid they couldn't have their parties with music anymore.
Sheila, is this related, I'm assuming people are misunderstanding the BZA complaint?
No, they're misunderstanding someone having house concerts.
No, they're misunderstanding that it was not a noise complaint, right? That was not the genesis of that, so that's, I think that's what's in the public, people thought it was a noise complaint, it was not, right? I'm sure we've all read the, the zoning violation, it was not a noise complaint, so.
I explained to them, this.
I think that is conversation.
You are having a party at your home, you are inviting your friends over, you are not posting this on a website saying, put money in this site and come on over and have a party, no. I said, you're having a regular party, just like we have on our little island.
Michelle will do a wonderful job of guiding them through.
Yes, so I explained, and will continue to explain that, so having an individual party was not a zoning violation.
No, it is not.
Thank goodness, because we do that a lot on Byward Lane, but we don't post it on the other.
Anything else for Sheila?
Thank you DPW, yeah, again, for keeping everything, I mean, they kept the snow out the last time, so I don't know what's gonna happen next, but that's it.
Speaking of DPW, I'm cleaning out my house, I'm on a mission, and I may have to get a special trash pickup by the time I come over, so be on the lookout, DPW. So yeah, so everything I was gonna share is already been shared, so I'll move right into our next part, which is, I mean, do you have a need for a closed meeting, but I think will be fairly short, but I do need a motion to go into closed session as provided under section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia for Discussion of Perspective Candidates Relative to Appointments to Boards and Commissions.
Motion renewed.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Okay, so we, we'll take a very brief recess, staff is excused except for the town manager and town attorney and the town clerk, she is gonna sit the alarm for five minutes.
If we say nay, can we leave?
I've never thought of that.
Sydney's leaving, so.
Bye Sydney.
Next time I'm gonna say nay.
Transparency.
That's right.
That was so funny.
It's like, man, I know this isn't exciting.
Our goal is to be as boring when we have a session.
It's exciting.
It's not gonna bother me, you have to say the alarm.
In that sense, you can't even vote.
No, you left as a.
If you do it, the risk is. I just wanted to make sure.
So I need to go to the web page and.
True.
But if they're out somewhere.
They're attending.
See, that's all it does, it doesn't give any graphics.
No, at least say where.
So that's your.
Yes.
So you download the actual.
Are you jealous? Yeah.
Yes, not really, cause I have this. Thank you very much.
That you sent somewhere, that you have the signature you want.
Probably the one that I sent to you.